Welcome, everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for February 28th, 2024. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107, Act of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Thank you. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great.
Nice job.
Okay, Meg?
Our vision, the vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. We will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? No, no Zoomers? Okay. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to, you know, special recognition something?
Special recognitions.
I'll seek approval of the minutes from February 7th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from February 7th, 2024.
Second.
Say all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And do we have, well, we do have students here for student rep report, so I'll turn it over to you ladies. Oh, new mic. I zoomed in first. Thank you.
So we had a lot of exciting things happen these past two weeks at Auburn. The track team went to the state championships, the boys' 4x8 relay, the girls' 4x2 relay, and the 55-meter boys' hurdle records were all broken at that meet. It was really exciting.
Awesome.
We also had a special mention for Kwakuakessi, who sung the National Anthem at the meet. It's really, really good. The Swickle Championship Boys and Girls are also doing a fundraiser for jackets. That's on a website. We also have the boys' hockey team, who won the Jeff Hayes Tournament this weekend, moving on to playoffs, and their first playoff game is tomorrow. The girls' hockey last weekend won their first-ever Kelly O'Leary Tournament, and they're also moving on to playoffs. Spring sports are starting March 18th. And for the winter carnival, seniors won, juniors were a close second, sophomores then freshmen closed off Friday with the Fun Assembly. And then for juniors, the Disney Breakfast is coming up March Saturday, 23rd.
All right, great.
That machine pretty much covered all of it. And then there is a ski trip coming up, so that'll be on March 8th, which is a Friday, and we'll leave, it's towards the end of the day, so we'll be there for most of it. That's really fun, is to Sugarloaf in Maine, which is really exciting. I'm very excited. It's been three years since I've skied the last time, but I went this week, so it was fine. Like riding a bike, pick it right back.
Riding a bike.
Yeah, exactly. Totally the same. A little more painful, but it's all right. It's all right, got it covered. And there are two weeks left in the trimester, two-ish, so which means finals, which, super fun. I'm very excited. The teachers also very excited. They love doing all that grading. I think that pretty much covers it. She did a really great job.
Finals next week?
Yes, they're usually the last two days. They split it up among two days, so it's not as much of a, not as much of a burden. We also have NHS induction coming up later this month. I do believe it's a Thursday. I cannot remember, 14th? Which is nice, so all of the new people, they should be getting their letters back soon if they haven't already. I do believe the appeal forms are already out. So me and the seniors will sit on the stage and tell everyone we're going to college, which is frightening and fun at the same time. I feel like I have one more thing. Oh, and there will be an NHS field trip for the new members and the current members. They do two every year. The Boston one, which is my favorite. And then I believe this year it's Campbell Farm, which is like ice cream, which is my favorite part, and.
Kimball.
Kimball, yes.
Yeah. It's so fun.
Is it? I've never been. I've heard such good things about it.
They expanded it. It is huge.
Really? I know it's close to the season, so I haven't been able to find any information on it yet, but.
Good ice cream.
It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, best ice cream.
Great, have fun in Stowe. Oh, Sugarloaf, I'm sorry. Sugarloaf.
Never been there before, so.
It's a good mountain.
Is it?
Yeah.
Lot of new places for ya. Molly, were you part of the track team?
Yes. Yep.
Great, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. Nice. Awesome job. All right, well, that was a great report. Thank you, guys, very much. Any questions or comments from the committee? No? All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So first thing up, as usual, is our student spotlight. And so this evening, I'm going to ask Mrs. Stanek to come up to the podium and introduce her students, who are here to talk about their 100th day of school projects.
So with me this evening, I have my kindergarten teachers. I have Tessa Fritz. And from her class, we have Harrison Graham, who's going to bring up his project. So Harrison, you can come on up. I have Nicole Elaine. And from her class, we have Mia Dorey, who's going to come up and join us. And we have Alexa Kennedy. And from her class, we have Ava Judge, who's going to join us this evening. And Kaylee Kittredge. We have Ayla Marujo also. All right, and they have a little something that they're going to share. So our 100th day happened. What do we have, about nine days ago? Does that sound right? So we only have 71 to go. So kindergarten does it, kindergarten, as well as first and second grade, do big celebrations on that day. So lots of us count up to 100 and then back from 80 to make it to those 180 days.
Cool. Gently.
Well, I don't have a good track record.
There we go, that's good.
Doing great.
We celebrated our 100th day of school in February. Everybody at Packard Dog made a project of 100 items.
Good job.
We invited families and friends to come, to come here to see our 100-day projects. It was really fun.
Ready? We also had.
We also had.
A goal.
A goal.
Of collecting 100.
Of collecting 100.
Items.
Items. At Auburn Youth.
And Family Services.
And Family Services.
We wanted to donate.
We wanted to donate.
Personal care.
Personal care.
Items.
Items.
To people in need.
To people in need.
In our community.
In our community.
Good job.
Nice job.
We are happy.
We are happy.
To say.
To say.
That we collected.
That we collected.
Over 200.
Over 200.
Items to donate.
Items to donate.
Wow.
100, wow.
Nicely done.
Um, I made a transformer poster with 100 transformer stickers.
Very nice.
Maybe he can come around this way, and he can stand there and hold it? If he wants to come around?
I made a, um, I made a 100, I made a cake with 100 candles on it.
Wow. Amazing.
I made.
A banana tree.
A banana tree.
With 100.
With 100, um, bananas.
Nice. Great job.
I made. A pond. A pond. With 100 ducks.
Can you stand there? Can I get a picture of you over here? Take a look at your project? Here it is. Can you guys look at me? Say please?
Great job!
Every year, it's amazing the creativity of the children and the families. And what we do is we invite all of the kindergarten families to come in and do a little museum walk through the 100th-day projects. So it was wonderful, and we just love the connection that they do in counting those at home. I'm not sure if the families do, but we love those projects. So thank you so much for having us this evening.
Was that, was it easy or hard to count things all the way to 100?
Hard.
Hard? Do you keep practicing? Hmm. And why did you choose ducks? Do you know? You like ducks?
Cause you like them.
Are they cute? I think I saw yours. I think there's little cute ducks in there. Am I right? I think so.
And are those bananas little runts? Cause those are my favorite.
Are those baby bananas?
Yeah.
Little runts?
Through the chair, she said she didn't even try to eat them when someone was looking, which I thought was impressive.
And what about that cake? Oh.
Me too. I love it.
That would be a lot of candles to blow out, right?
Yeah.
Well, nicely done, everyone. And kindergarten teachers, thank you for your hard work with all that. Beautiful job.
Great job! Parents, that's a lot of patience right there.
I've been doing this.
Yeah, yeah, I gotta see these up close.
Yeah, come on up.
Come on, bring them up.
No eating them. Yeah, no eating them.
Oh, my goodness, look at those ducks. His birthday is almost 100. Let me see those ducks. Great job! I knew I liked those. Oh, I love that. I love it. Great job!
Oh, I've seen your switcher.
You did a great job.
But there is.
Harrison, beautiful. Good job. Good job.
Amazing.
Nicely done, everyone. And for the folks that are here for this presentation, you're free to head on your merry way. We appreciate you coming in to share with us and bringing your kiddos. Thanks, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Great job. Good job.
Bella, did you, you don't have to tell me which one yet, but did you pick a school?
I've picked two so far.
Okay, okay. Oh, yeah. Good for you. Amazing. Can I ask you a question? When did you start looking at colleges? Like, when did you start that?
Have a good night.
Of junior year, okay. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Great job! I only asked, my daughter's a sophomore, so I'm like, when do I have to begin this? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Well, I look forward. Bye. Appreciate it, thank you. I look, yeah, oh, I'm sure. I look forward to hearing what you've said.
Super cute.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh.
No.
The little ducks.
In Mrs. Stanek's kindergarten class. So I got the walkthrough. It was, it was like a museum. Legos and.
Thank you. Hi, thank you so much.
And, um, one of the girls did 100 fun days, or whatever, so like her at the park, her at the water park with all of her friends. And it was like this huge poster board. I went, we need to know who her mom is, because she's, she's, she definitely helped. But you could see, cause it wasn't like perfectly, like it was just like, it was super cute.
Oh, that was fun. Adorable.
So many good ones.
Such a great job.
So many good ones.
I love doing them with my kids.
Yeah.
Loved it. Freya and I had fun. We did goldfish. And then Sydney and I did like a lion with a mane.
There was, there was a goldfish. And then, do you remember that movie Up with the Balloons?
Yeah.
One of the kids did that with the balloons. It was, it was super cute.
Great. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business.
Okay, here comes Debbie Downer.
Yeah.
After seeing that wonderful work of our students.
Dr. Shama, do you mind if I just shut the door?
No, I'll shut it. Thank you. Just for a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we should have switched these two, so it was a little.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should have done this one first and then have fun.
So tonight, as you know, I'm returning to you with a revised FY25 draft budget for your approval. Much like happens each year, this happens frequently. Once we submit a draft budget, what happens is, is the town goes through their exercises with all town departments to create an overall budget for the town. And we are often asked at that time to reassess our budget and often revise down what we're asking for. So the changes in this budget were done based on a request from the town. A number of variables led to the request for this change. And I'm going to give you just a broad overview of what those were. Many of these variables begin with the overall decrease in revenues available at the state level. I think anyone watching the news these days, if you watch the local news, will hear about difficulties with revenue at the state level. We continue to await information on state funding. And as you also know, sometimes the actual state budget isn't finalized until June or sometimes even July. And I think last year was even a bit later than that. So we are using the best information available to us. But this reduction in funding is having certainly a trickle-down direct influence on the revenue that the town and the school district has available. As shared with you at one of the last meetings, we have been designated as a whole harmless district by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, meaning that we're receiving for our Chapter 70 money, $30 per student. This, so this year, well, well, in, for FY25, that will add up to $70,010. That's an increase in our Chapter 70 money. For FY24, this current year, our increase had been $1.1 million. That's a huge amount of money to make up. And again, the primary driver with the lower amount of increase in Chapter 70 money has to do with student enrollment, something being seen across the state. Likewise, the decrease in state aid is being felt by the town, coupled with increases in employee benefit requirements, health insurance costs, the assessment that we're responsible to pay for BayPath for Auburn students being educated there is increased by $250,000, other contractual obligations, and a longstanding commitment of the town to not tax beyond the 2.5%. That's been a very longstanding, probably, Cecilia, you're more well-aware than I on how long that's, that's been kind of a guidepost for the town.
The time I've been here since, I believe even before that. Yeah. A few years.
So.
Ten years.
While this is not something that we want to do, the budget before you continues to prioritize the needs of our students with an emphasis on maintaining the class sizes that we have, we strive to keep. Keeping the social and emotional support that we currently have at each school that we know is critical, high-quality curriculum materials, up-to-date technology, and we believe we can meet our contractual obligations. We're also working to maintain the nursing staff across the district to ensure all of our buildings are medically supported, medically well-supported. We continue to maximize the use of revolving and grant funds, as we always have. The most recent change in the funding available to us was received in late January. And this is funding for our newly arrived students. This funding, and we can look a little bit later in, in the packet, you have a sheet that kind of describes that funding. And we can talk about it a bit in a, in a minute. But this funding is completely dependent upon the enrollment of these students in our schools. So I think you all know, to some degree, that this has been a very nebulous and ever-changing scenario with the students that we have that have been placed through that shelter. And so likewise, I have some confidence that this funding will indeed make its way to Auburn and that these students seemingly will be with us through the end of this school year. But I also can't guarantee that in two weeks, someone's not going to say they're being moved to someplace else. It's just such a, such a very tenable situation. So we believe that they'll be with us, but that could definitely change. So for now, the changes that are reflected in this budget are the loss of two teaching positions. We're using the positions of two retirees as placeholder for the positions, with the final determination of where these cuts will be made, happening later in the year, with the primary goal of being to mitigate the impact that these cuts have on our students. We're also utilizing funding from the newly arrived students to fund one full-time position, along with a $100,000 offset to transportation. So the results in this revised FY25 budget reflects a five-point, a 4.5% increase. The initial draft budget that you approved back in January reflected a 5.63 increase. So it is a substantial change, yet one that I believe, given this funding that we didn't receive until the end of January, will help us to offset some of that. This hasn't been an easy process for anyone. As with any organization, we're a part of the team. That's the Town of Auburn. And we have to do what we can to support a budget that is deemed to be fiscally responsible. Initially, the town did ask that we come in as close to 4% as we could. But as we looked at what was available to us and what that would mean for us, we felt that the lowest we could go was the 4.5% increase. So we ask for your support. We welcome your questions. There are not sweeping changes. It is quite remarkable on how a few changes can add up to quite a bit of money. You know? So again, not anything that anyone wanted to do, but it is not an unusual situation where we typically see at this time of year that the town, once they have their budget items in order, tend to come back, not only to us, but to other departments, and adjust what they're willing to accept to, as our part of the overall town budget. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or thoughts about that.
You said those two teachers, the, they're two retiring, and they're just, we're not, we're not filling them.
So, so we are using those as placeholders now. So it may not be that we won't replace their specific position, because what we're going to try and do, and again, we need to look at our enrollment as it gets closer to the end of the year and what we see coming in to determine what position across the district would have the least impact on our kids. So I don't know that it'll be those positions, but that's what, you'll see that there is no funding in for them for next year. But again, it may not be those actual positions.
Any more questions or thoughts?
Through the chair, as a goal, it's maintaining class sizes, keeping what we have.
Keeping socially-emotional programs in place.
It is, and you know, so our funding is down because our enrollment is also down.
Right.
And so seemingly, you know, again, not optimally, because I, the best thing is that we can keep all these positions, right? That would be the best-case scenario. And again, I can't tell you that things won't change again, but I believe that this is going to be necessary to be in line with the, with what the town needs. And I also believe that due to our enrollment, we can make this work in a way that's going to have a minimal impact on our kids.
I think kids have to come first, so.
Agree. Agree. And that's why I don't want to say that just because these folks are retiring, those are the positions that we're not filling. That's exactly why I don't want to say that. I want to wait and see, because we can continue to look at where this would hit the kids.
Okay. And we're not, and we're not losing anything regarding social workers?
No.
Or guidance comes, okay.
Not at this time.
Okay.
And through the chair, I mean, this is, the town wants us to lower this budget. This is not our choice, but we have to, so.
Yeah, the town's been very supportive.
Yeah.
All along, and I'm grateful for that. This was a, I felt, a huge hit to our plans. We weren't asking for the sun, moon, and stars by any means, but you know, there, any of the buffer that we had for everything is now gone. So we're down to the shoestring budget that we were dreading. But, um, again, if we can alleviate the, anything affecting the kids.
Yeah.
Then I think, yeah, that's.
And I feel like that's what you guys have done. I mean, and you've had sleepless nights over this, I know.
And it continues to, it continues.
Yes, yes. Through the chair, I just have one more question. If we take a vote and we do approve this budget, there is still a chance that we would have to lower more.
Um.
If you come back to us.
I mean, there's always a chance of anything. I think the chance is slim.
Okay.
I do think it's slim. I think Mr. Kazanovich, the town manager, has done all he can to support everything he can for us. So I don't anticipate that, but again, you know, you just don't know, but I don't think so.
Through the chair, the process here is.
We approve that it does have to go to the select board and then to the town. And I'm thinking long term, why? I don't want to go in against what they're saying in ten years' timeline, the town not giving us what we need at that point either. And also, so let's say, I know the newly arrived students is kind of a moving target. If we lose them, that's holding another one full-time employee, correct? So that is the big moving target.
Correct, correct. Now, we are receiving, we did receive, and maybe this was a, that's a good lead in before we take a vote on the budget to look at that, the next shoestring package. Which outlines the funding that's expected. But you'll see, so in the end of January, we received one hundred and twenty-one. So if we start at the top, when we first got our twenty-two students, we were given an allotment of a thousand dollars per student as a flat one-time payment. That's the only time that will happen. So students we just received, we don't get an additional thousand dollars for them. It was a one-time thing. So now the funding is based on a hundred and four dollars and eighty-nine cents per day of enrollment. So if you look in the left, there's a one twenty-four, twenty-four date. We received a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the students that we have, and that was through December fifteenth of twenty, of twenty twenty-three. That first payment was short by the payment for four students of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. So seemingly, if these students stay with us through the end of the year, in total, we will receive three hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. The second box starts with February sixteenth of twenty-three, when we enrolled an additional sixteen students. Again, there is no one-time funding for them. If they stay through us, with us through the end of the school year, it will account for a hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which, so the total funding would work out to be five hundred and forty-seven thousand, seventy-nine dollars. But again, they have to stay involved with us. And so you'll see at the bottom, the funding that we're using this year, which, you know, we bought, we had to buy iPads and the like, classroom supplies, instructional materials. We funded part of our EL teacher. We're hiring two additional staff to support student needs, and we offset some of our transportation. And that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. For next year, we're designating fully funding an EL staff person, the two additional staff members, a hundred thousand dollars in transportation. So that leaves at the bottom a hundred and three dollars, a hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars that I have not allocated at this point. And the reason I have left that out there is because if for some reason, this money doesn't come through, because the last payment, we don't expect to receive until August. And again, we see at the state level that their revenues are down. They're telling us we're going to get this money. I want to believe them, but would I, you know, bet the whole farm on that? I'm not going to do that. And so that gives us a little bit of a buffer if for some reason, some of this funding doesn't materialize. So that's a wait and see.
Any more questions or comments? Are we ready to vote on this?
I might have no choice.
We don't really have a choice.
Good chance to look at it.
I'll make a motion to a vote to approve the revised FY twenty-five draft budget presented by the superintendent.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to new business.
So I think, are there any other questions around the newly arrived students based on the information?
No.
Okay.
It should be noted, though, that the first payment that they did, we did receive was not even the full amount for us. So that's what we're dealing with.
Yes.
I like partial empty promises, so.
That works out to twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So that's not, nothing. The next item in your packet has to do with my goals update in the process for summative evaluation. So the first item in your packet, you'll find an update related to my goals for this year. So I'll briefly go through those. It does say at the top superintendent's performance goals, and then we'll move on to the remaining part of this item. The first one is the student learning goal that was really focused on building a data analysis cycle, particularly related to addressing the gap between the performance of special education and general education students. We continue to have data discussions at the buildings. We have data teams at each building analyzing data. I've been using, working with iReady and Dibbles Data with principals to look at progress, and they're using that to set up, set their intervention groups up. Classroom visits are ongoing. Universal Design for Coaches have been actively working in their own classrooms, and at a couple of our school buildings, they've opened their classrooms to other staff who want to come in and observe the UDL lessons, and principals are making arrangements for them to do that. So that's very exciting. Principals were asked to find a data set that they found interesting based on what they know of their children and to analyze that through a lens of equity. So whether that be our special education students performing at the same level, our students of color included in AP classes as much as that, you know, as that reflects the population of the school. We had a wonderful discussion at our principals meeting today. It was a, it was meant to be a, not an all-encompassing assignment, but to begin to build our muscles around looking for areas of inequity when it comes to student performance. And it was a great discussion. I think we all learned a lot from one another. So that will continue, and then along with that, with this data information, I'm going to take some next steps with what they might do to support what their, what their findings were. So that's great. And we're currently looking at establishing, and actually, I think some of it started after-school programming for students who need support, and that's come out of some of those analyses. My second, the second goal is a professional practice goal related to my participation in NISIP, which is the New Superintendent Induction Program. I continue to attend the meetings and have now begun to share some of the information that they share with us. So recently, I shared with principals an article on feedback that works. We all need to give feedback. We also need to know how to get feedback, and that was something that we discussed at a principal meetings. And we also revisited UDL look-for's, which is something that's come out of our training that we've gone through, so that we revisited what they should be looking for as they enter classrooms, so that we know that UDL is starting to take shape. The next district improvement goal had to do with making sure that some of our leadership time was talking about deepening our knowledge of unconscious bias, racial identity, racism, and how they might contribute to inequitable situations in our school buildings. Again, here, I also listed that analysis of those small data sets for those types of inequities, which I think is going to be a very powerful tool for us. Mr. Keller also found an excellent gentleman, his name is Colin Rolls from Perennial Education. He's providing us with some training around building coherence between our strategic plan and our belief in equity, and how we can marry that with the data to make sure that the steps that we're taking are all pushing us in the same direction, and we're not kind of firing on all cylinders and kind of throwing spaghetti at the wall, right? We want this to be a coherent process, and that has been some terrific professional development for myself and for the other folks on the leadership team. Ms. Rocco and I continue to work on that onboarding process. We're in the process of our personnel record, so that goes on. And finally, the last district improvement goal is around regular updates on the strategic plan. So I did share my first update. I got some decent feedback about it, that people were happy to see that, so I hope to continue that once a month, just kind of letting people know what we're working on related to that. And we'll see what folks say. I'll ask at the end of the year. And then finally, this is, this continues to kind of be, I will tell you, not one of my main priorities around a facilities committee, given the influx of kids, our lower enrollment, and how that's all played out. But we are going to at least do a walkthrough of our buildings with a group of folks that I'm going to be organizing. I know Ms. McCullough, you were going to be on there. This was from some time ago, just to take a look and make sure that our needs are being, our kids' needs are being met that way. So I welcome any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions?
Okay, all right. Thank you. So the next step with this is, is the time of year for, for you to complete my evaluation. So I know that last year, when you completed this, there was some feedback that there were things that some of the members said that you just didn't have information about and didn't quite know if I did it or didn't do it as part of my job. And so the first item in your, in your packet is my examples of evidence for the twenty-three, twenty-four evaluation. So what I tried to do here is to give a sampling of the things that I do in each of the areas for which you'll be evaluating me throughout the rubric. And again, this is just a sampling. This is not a comprehensive list of everything I do. And some of these are linked, so I think, did you get the packet electronically too? Yeah, so the links should be live in there, related to the strategic plan, the district report card, some of those things. So again, this is just for your reference as you work through completing the evaluation over the next few weeks. And I will not go through all of this, but I thought it was useful because it does make sense that there would be things that we may not necessarily discuss here at a meeting, but that you might want to know that I, that I do do during the course of the day. So likewise, the next item is the actual rubric itself. So this is the rubric from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that outlines what it means to be unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary in each of the areas of the rubric that you'll be evaluating me on. So thought that that was a good resource for you to have. And then finally, is the actual summative evaluation report that you complete. And so I'm going to read what I had here, so. So you'll find the pertinent pages of the evaluation form along with the rubric. Each school committee member will be asked to respond to each of the indicators noted under each of the performance standards to the best of their ability as exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. If a member does not have knowledge of an indicator, it's okay to leave it blank. You may also provide comments related to each of the selections for the overall standards, but you are not required to. At the, at our next school committee meeting on March thirteenth, you'll have the opportunity to ask me any questions you may have or gather additional information. So that will give you some time to look through some of the examples of evidence that I provided to you. Once we do that, the form then will be completed and sent to School Committee Chair Jesse Harrington by Wednesday, March twentieth. She will take these evaluation report forms. She'll compile the results, which will be shared at the March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four school committee meeting. These results will be shared as my evaluation and then will be used to set my goals for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year to be shared with the committee at a later date. So I really was planning to put this off a little bit, and then I realized time was running short, actually. The year's going to be over, so thought in speaking with Mrs. Harrington that this would be a good time to get this process going. So it does give a little bit of time. So between now and the next meeting, there's time to look through the information, and then we can ask questions at the next one, and then the evaluation will take place after that.
Steph, I know this is all new to you and probably very overwhelming. There's a lot of information here, so if you have any questions or anything, don't hesitate to reach out. Meg and I have been through this a hundred times, so.
Gave me the heads up.
Okay, all right, good. And I live daily with her, and I see her in the trenches, and I have to say, like, she's a busy woman. Yeah, you're busting your butt, and thank you very much for all you do, so. And Alan as well, and Cecilia as well. And Mandy, you're best. You have a good team.
Through the chair, so this is end of cycle, so your aim is that you have met all these goals. I feel like UDL is like ongoing.
UDL is on, yeah. So, so I think I have made very, yeah, I think I've met the goals this year related to that, I think, other than the one around the facilities piece. But that kind of, it fell off a little bit when our enrollment went down and all of that, so it became less of a priority, even though I do think it's still a priority that we have a good updated kind of evaluation of our building resources and what we have based on the enrollment we have now. So I think it's important to follow through with, but I will tell you that it did take kind of a backseat to some of the other things related to instruction.
But through the chair, you hired another facility assistant or something for another building, right? You had, what's his name, Mr. Fahey?
Yeah.
And you went through and did all the stuff for the high school track and made sure that they were meeting all of like the custodial needs. Like you've talked about that throughout, like it's been very small, like it hasn't been like the frontrunner, but you, one hundred percent.
Oh, yeah, no, and I.
Like, one hundred percent, like I know he's come in and he's just like, and we're working on this, and we're working on this.
Exactly.
And windows, and like I.
Yes, and I, I meet with him regularly, and of course, he, you know, he runs, he runs the show related to all those things, because Joe knows all about our buildings. But no, a lot has been happening, for sure, right? This is just taking a little bit of a different lens related to when you see kids sitting in classrooms and do they have what they need related to that kind of space, right? He's, he's more through that maintenance lens, so a little bit different.
Little bit different, okay.
Yeah.
And coming off of COVID, we had talked about creating like a committee of different stakeholders in the community to come together and all work on this, and that's kind of what's taken the backseat.
Okay.
But there's still work in progress.
Like I feel like you've, like the little, you know, crumbs that we get of like, we're doing this, and then we have this, and then power line something with, you know, UDL and making sure they have connectivity, like it's, like little pieces.
Yeah, it's ongoing.
It's just not the star.
We just don't have the group of people going school to school.
Exactly.
We will, we're working on that.
Yes.
We will.
Yeah. So, all right. Any more questions or comments regarding the evaluation? Okay, and if anyone has questions or along the way, you have my cell, and Beth is always here to answer questions as well, so.
And you're also welcome to reach out in between if, if there's something I'm happy to, to meet.
Okay, great. All right, we'll move on.
The next two items somewhat go together. There's an item for EL-tiered focus monitoring and special education-tiered focus monitoring. Lucky us, we are the double winner of this process this year. This is a regular process. So for the EL-tiered focus monitoring, the Office of Language Acquisition conducts a review of programs through this tiered focus monitoring. They do it every several years. We have to begin the self-assessment, actually, anytime we have all the information downloaded with what we need to gather, which we have to upload information on certain students, obviously anonymously, and then a lot of reporting kind of things on, did we fill out certain forms and letters set in a timely way? Likewise, special education, we'll go through that as well. The EL has to be finished by May thirty-first. The special ed tiered focus monitoring, they're using an entirely new platform to report all this, and the platform's not completely built yet, so I don't know how that's going to play out with finishing this, this year, because it's not, we can't even start it yet, so. But two big, big projects for folks in this office that will be undertaken now, and then typically in the fall, they have, they'll come for either virtual or in-person visits. So more to come.
Okay.
I'd swallow wax. I included in here, which I had done some at the beginning of the year, I just took the, the list of events from our district calendar, only to highlight, for anyone who may be watching, that the schools are doing a great job with maintaining the events on here, so if you're ever wondering what's going on and when it's going on, for the most part, it will be found here. So I just thought it was another good time, kind of mid-year, to, to remind everyone that that resource is available on our website.
Yeah, there's a lot of good stuff going on.
A lot of good stuff. Yeah.
All right, good to know. All right, we'll move on to teaching and learning report.
Yeah, I have just a couple of things to report on tonight that didn't make it into the agenda. So we are in the process of, or actually, I submitted two grants. We're waiting for information on those pieces. So one of the grants is, as you are aware, we have new physical education and health standards that were released, and so the state released a grant application to districts to receive professional development on that piece, and so we've submitted that. There's also another grant that we submitted on social studies curriculum. So the state has this, worked with Primary Source, which is a professional development provider, to write curriculum called Investigating History that's received really positive feedback in the, from districts that have piloted it this past year, and so they're opening it up to grades three, four, excuse me, to grades four, five, six, and seven. And so we submitted a grant application for that, which will also include professional development and the opportunity to get those resources. So we're waiting to hear feedback on that, so.
Great.
I will update the committee.
Yeah, those will be two great things if we get that, so, yeah.
Through the chair, I use Investigating History, and it is a wonderful curriculum, so highly recommend. Hopefully, someone gets that grant, because I've been piloting it this year.
Okay.
And it's, it's much, it has a much higher rigor and much higher expectations, and it, it's, there's some, it just takes a lot of the, you know, what you need to teach versus what you like to teach out of the history curriculum, because I could spend like months on Egypt, and, because I like teaching that, but you don't need to spend months on Egypt, so it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful curriculum.
We had applied for a couple of years ago. I think when I first became assistant superintendent at fifth grade, and we didn't get it. It was very, very competitive. I think now, I think we may have a better chance. It went to a lot of the cities and that kind of thing first, so hopefully, I think that's awesome.
Yeah, it's very, it's, it's, like I said, it's much more rigorous and, you know, a lot more, you know, I, I really like how the program works, like they give you a PowerPoint, a slide deck, and then you have, and then there's videos, and there's interactive, and there's lecture, and then it just mixes it up so much, so.
That's great. Awesome.
All right. Yeah. All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on to Cecilia's business and financial report.
All right, good evening, everyone. In your packet, I have a listing of the school department warrant articles that I have on the board of selectmen voted on February twelfth to open the warrant for May seventh annual town meeting and to close the warrant on March fourth. So provided these warrant articles for you to review and approve, and they'll be sent over to the town on or before March fourth, so. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The articles are pretty much the typical standard articles that we present, the first one being the Medicaid article. We did go up from one forty, a request of one forty to one fifty this year, because the last couple of years receipts have shown that we've steadily been increasing, but we're doing it conservatively. We're not kind of being too aggressive, so we felt like one fifty was a doable amount. And the rest of the amounts, the gym trust and the McKinny-Vento homeless and the foster care transportation all have blank amounts. The trust fund, we usually get that from the town later on in the, you know, in a few months later, and we also wait for the McKinny-Vento and the foster care receipts, what we'll get back from the state from DOE. Those are, they're directly related to what we report on the end-of-the-year report, and we get a percentage back on what we've actually expensed for the year, the previous year for FY twenty-three, so. But as soon as I get those, I'll fill those in. Basically, sometimes we don't hear until after June, and then we'll probably put that article off till the fall, but it's important for us to get it on there, just the fact that, so if the money comes in, we get the money, so.
All right.
Any questions, or?
No. No. Important to get on the agenda, though.
Yeah, nothing unusual.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thinking of that, just roughly. Mr. Fahey, Mr. Fahey and I did meet, because sometimes on the warrant article for the annual town meeting, we will present repurposing CIP funds, but we went through our CIP and discussed that with Dr. Chamberlain as well, and we didn't feel any need to move any funds or to ask to repurpose that, so everything's on target the way we planned, so we're in good shape that way.
Great, all right, great, good news. Okay.
So I need a vote, I guess.
Yeah. Seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the school department warrant articles for May seventh, twenty-twenty-four annual town meeting as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've also put in your packet a year-to-date budget report dated February sixteenth, as well as budget transfers dated February sixteenth, between the same series, your information and between different series for which I'm seeking your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have with regard to the year-to-date budget report or the actual transfers.
Any questions?
No.
Seeing none, I'll seek a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four as presented by the business manager.
Second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thank you all very much.
All right, thank you for your report.
Through the chair, I'm just going to reiterate that I'm really going to miss her.
Yeah.
Really going to miss her.